Welcome, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the New London Board of Selectmen. Nancy Rollins continues her bereavement leave and hopefully she'll be back with us in the next week or two. For those of you who are following her situation, the memorial service for her partner is on Saturday morning at 11 o'clock at St. Andrews Church if anybody would like to be part of that ceremony. In order to move as quickly as we can tonight, I'm going to try to get through all of the business of the Board of Selectmen before we start the budget meeting, which means I'm going to put the public comments at the back end so that we'll see if we have time for them. So, I guess the first item of business, you must be the workaholics. Thank you, are going to talk to us about metal detecting on town property. Please come up. Use the podium, please, and push the little button and make the light go green on the microphone. Beautiful.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, so I'm not sure if anybody, if you've all received this paperwork that I've sent out.
Yes.
I don't know if you want me to review it from the top?
Brief summary, this meeting is being recorded, incidentally.
Sure.
And so, for the purpose of the recording, so people who are watching it will know what we're talking about, and also the audience here.
Okay.
You don't need to do the whole 10 yards, but...
Okay, well, basically, Percy and I are both professional metal detectors. We have over 3,500 hours detecting in the past three, four years. One thing we do take pride is we're very clean. We've never had any issues, anybody complaining about damaged lawns or any property whatsoever. We have done the New London, behind the New London SAU, if you do need a reference. We've done the two fields back there. And basically, we're hoping to maybe get permission to metal detect in front of the Town Hall, as well as the greens, the gazebo area, the whole park, which is pretty much right over there. When we dig holes, they're very small. We would only, we would use a hand trowel. The hole would be maybe about the size of a golf ball-sized hole, and probably, more likely than not, about three to four inches. We cut C-section holes so the grassroots stay connected, so we never chop the whole hole out where the grass could actually die in the middle there. So typically, we just kind of cut a C, flip it over, retract whatever's in there, and put it back. If should we, you know, come across anything that's historically important, we would obviously try to donate it to, whether you have a historical society or whatnot. And anything that's, you know, precious, or maybe like an engagement ring, or, you know, a wedding ring or something like that, we would always try to return to the owners. So in short, I guess that's what we're here for.
You have a question? Microphone.
Yeah, I'm still thinking about it.
Yes, of course.
Go ahead.
So, why do you do this? Is it a hobby, or...?
It was a hobby that sort of has become, I would almost say, an obsession. We do it, we both have jobs. She's a teacher at the Kierzach High School, and I do television commercial work. But we also have a YouTube channel, though we probably, more likely than not, we do not tell the location we're at, because we don't want to entice other detectors to come to our spot. Not that there's probably anybody in this area that watches us, but we do film everything we find, pretty much, and that goes on our YouTube channel.
Kim, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm not aware of, well, I don't think the question's ever been asked here in New London, at least since I've been here. And I'm not aware of other towns, so I don't know how other towns deal with this. I think it's quite common on beaches. I've seen it myself on bigger beaches, I'm not sure our town beaches, but I think it's fairly common on beaches.
Yeah.
So I don't really have anything to add here. I've never...
We have gotten permission in Sanburton. We've talked to the town administrators there, they gave us our blessing to do their property. And so again, if you do need a reference, there's that option.
I guess, I mean, with anything, if the selectmen allow one group, then it could be others that would ask, and then the selectmen would then have to be deciding on that.
That's what we figured. I mean, we don't want to be out there and, you know, make it look like, you know, it's open to the public to be able to do this, so that's what we're going to, you know, approach you. Should anybody ask us, you know, is it okay to detect it, we would say certainly we need permission from the town.
Okay, I guess, how long does it usually take you to do this? A field that size, for example?
It really depends on, we try to respect the owner's rights, so, you know, if they don't want us there for that long, we would certainly just spend maybe a day, spend eight hours going as fast as we can. We tend to be very thorough, so we like to do rows up and down, and that's why we've been, we've been very successful. But, you know, if it's something that, you know, you didn't maybe, you know, give us a day, if you give us two days, you know, something like that, I guess it all depends on how long you would like us out there. Something that size could take us maybe four trips, for sure. But again, yeah, it's, it's, we respect whatever you like, you know, so if you would, you know, even generously give us a day, we would do what we can in a day.
And one other thing I would add then, Bill, is I'm not sure, hopefully there are no wires or things four inches. I know I metal detected at my house once, and I dug up a wire, so then I just stopped, so...
Typically, yeah, if we come across, we have come across, you know, issues where there's pipes and wires, but we can tell. I mean, if the signal continues, then we obviously know it's, we don't, if we can tell whether something's small, something's long, or whatnot. And typically, wires would be a constant signal for several feet, at least, which we would not even try to put a shovel on the ground there.
That would be, you know, experts, not unlike me, who just was...
Yeah.
It made me nervous, though.
Sure, sure.
Do you have insurance? I mean, what if something were to happen, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we do not have insurance for something like this. You know, if something were to happen, we would certainly pay for the damages. But that's, you know, again, that's something you would have to think about, because we, we're not insured for something like this. I don't even know if there is an insurance policy for something like this, to be honest.
I guess I'm not totally comfortable with the idea of you're strolling around on the town green with metal detectors.
Which totally makes sense, yeah.
It just seems, I don't know, it somehow seems inappropriate. Not that I don't applaud what you do, but I just think I'm not sure that's the type of thing we want to see activity going on on the town common.
That's, that's why we're here, we're just seeking a yes and no, and yeah, we're totally okay with a no. Yeah.
Anybody in the audience want to chime in on this? John?
What happens to the items that the gold and silver coins are defined?
Yeah, I would love to say we would find a gold coin or something like that, it's still on our bucket list. Again, any items that are historically important, we would return. Valuables, you know, old coins, it's hard to kind of find what an owner, you know, an owner like that is, but say something that belonged to a family here from the past, or something like, you know, her grandfather helped build the church across the street, you know, something like that, we would seek out the owners. We've found things where we've actually were able to find the owners and return them, from wedding bands to, she found a silver spoon with initials on it that, you know, the person had lost 70 years prior, and things like that, so, yeah. So yeah, if you have a historical society, we would gladly donate to that.
We'd see you.
Yeah.
So my sense is that we're a little reluctant, there are only two of us here tonight, and I do think that Janet makes a good point about, you know, people wondering what's going on on the town green, it's such a public place, that I think, at least at this point, we should defer, and perhaps you might come back in the spring.
Sure.
When we're got a full board again, if you're still interested in doing it, but I think...
By all means, yeah.
My sense is that we're probably not going to approve it tonight.
Oh, of course. That's something, yeah, and definitely, you know, think about it over the winter time, you know, if that's something you would allow us to do, but we would certainly be back in the spring.
Thank you for coming forward.
So, Percy, are you a Stanley?
I'm a Stanley.
Oh, I thought so.
I'm Sumner and Dana's daughter.
Yes.
Yep.
So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, Maureen Pearl, who's going to bring us an update on the Waste Reduction Committee, bringing her trash with her.
I brought some shelter supplies.
Maureen, you need to press the button and get back to green.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to tell you, first of all, we got our compost pilot program off the ground last Friday. We selected 20 households out of the 33 households who applied for the program. The 33 that we had to turn away, we recommended and gave them resources for residential pickup if they were interested in following up on the composting idea. Each of the 20 households received a renewal bucket, large five-gallon bucket, two bio-bags, which we hope they will continue to use. And inside the bucket, they also received a list of what you can and cannot put in the bucket, and then step-by-step directions with pictures of what you do with what. Our initial cost was $200 for 20 buckets, and $80 for the large tote, which is attached to the left side of the recycling, outside, left side of the recycling transfer, at the transfer station. And the pickup will be, for the one large tote, is $37 a week. So if we do get more and more compost, and we need to go to two totes, two of those large garbage cans, then it would be $69 a week for two. But right now, we're just aiming to fill up one. I've gotten great responses from the people that are involved in the project, and they've banded together, and they're going to purchase 500 of these bags from Amazon, because it cuts the price from a dollar a bag to 22 cents a bag, so they're on it. Other projects that we, that are, the Waste Reduction Committee has in the pipeline is a couple of plastic and styrofoam collection, which we hope to at some point take over to the only styrofoam recycling, uh, thank you, facility in the state, in Guilford. So styrofoam collection at some point in the future. The Rotary Club is still doing their film plastic, which has been extremely successful. And we are looking to, look into interviewing restaurants to encourage them in ways to reduce plastic in restaurants in town. One of our primary goals that we are going to start approaching very soon is education of the town residents. And what that will involve will be working with more visibility on the town website, linking it to the transfer station for ease of moving around the website. We're hoping to develop some handouts and mini-classes, such as the one, I attended a mini-class in Hopkinton. It was kind of like a seminar, a public seminar, and we had nice attendance, and I got some good ideas of how they are educating the public about waste reduction in their town. So that's it. Okay?
Thank you, Maureen. As you know, Janet, I've been sitting in on these meetings, so I'm not going to ask questions that I already know the answers to. Do you have anything?
Maureen, just one question. Who takes the bag, compost bag, at the transfer station? Where does that go?
Renewal Compost is the company that's picking up there.
Oh, they pick it up?
And they're picking it up once a week, by state statute, you have to. And they're also, they're doing Tuckers, and this week, Blue Loom started with them. So it's great, because it's a compost-dedicated company. I'm showing my bias here. It's also a small company, and they're young entrepreneurs, and I just...
We would love to support them. Where are they located?
They are out of Manchester.
Okay.
They're out of Manchester, but they, um...
We have a backup supply here.
They're, they're out of Manchester, but they take the compost to a farm in Derry, where it is composted, and it's an on-farm composting facility, so they get the compost. If you're a part of their residential program, you, they pick up your compost at your residence, and then at the end of the season, they give you a bucket of compost. It is, it's worked out well.
Bob Harrington, do you have anything you want to add? You've been fantastic support to the group so far.
Bob's been great, and so has Nancy.
I'm going to keep it short. The only thing I'd like to say is thank you for Maureen's dedicated, hard work on that. She's been working at it quite longer than the committee, so I know it was a goal of hers, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Maureen, and the whole committee, the whole committee is just fantastic to work with, I have to say.
I have...
I actually have fun going to the meetings.
Yes, they're fun.
So thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider supporting the RPC application to apply for a Navigator grant with Sunapee, Wilmot, and Newbury, as supported by the Housing Commission. Peter Nichols, are you...
Bill, did you want to go, I think, for the Whipple Hall Project Committee?
Oh, I missed one, sorry. Stay seated. First of all, 2022 Whipple Hall Project Committee recommendation for construction manager, Colin and Frank, it looks like.
Good evening, Colin Beasley, Frank Azalone. So we sent you a memo, Phil and Rip can't be here, so we sent you a memo, an update trying to get money allocated, or actually get your approval for money, which has already been allocated, but to spend on the construction manager, principally for pre-construction engineering, project management functions. So if you have any questions, we're here to address them, and if you don't, we'd ask you for your approval of it.
So, basically, this is a clerk-of-the-works type of thing, is that...
It's a little bit more. It's estimating, it's scheduling, it's estimating, scheduling, it's, it's what we need to kind of help determine what the costs are going to be, and to help you decide what parts of the work are going to get done.
So that this person would work with Bob and Kim, just to coordinate the use of this, you know, to be in here, and...
So it would start, actually, this person's going to be more looking at the overarching schedule, so ultimately, you'll get the Bob and Kim when you scope that out, but the first step is going to really try to get the cost of it, so we can bring to you the total cost of everything, to the extent the cost exceeds the allocation from the budget, then we can go through that. But ultimately, you get that project team, that project plan in place as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm in favor of this, Janet, because I think it is a first step in getting some control over what the spending's going to be, and so on, so...
Right.
Because when I was working with the group, just as we got started, after we disbanded the Building and Facilities Committee, I thought that, you know, this was a reasonable step that Phil Sherman thought we ought to be taking, so... So I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, Peter Nichols. Said I was going to go quickly tonight, and I went almost too quickly. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Peter Nichols, I'm the chairman of the Housing Commission. This is a Navigator grant, which is $250,000 worth of funding, coming from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, to the Regional Planning Commission, in which we take part, and I'm also representative of the town, along with Jerry Coogan. The funds are to help a group of towns in one area deal and enhance their ability to do community engagement. The towns that are included in this group are Sunapee, New London, Wilmot, and New London, I'm sorry, Sunapee, Wilmot, Newbury, and New London, the four towns. They are all in the same Regional Planning Commission area, but also in the same immediate area, dealing with the same citizenry, the same communities, we're all together. It is to enhance the community's ability to reach out to their communities specifically on workforce housing questions, and, and how to do the kind of regulatory changes that the Housing Commission is now working hard on with the Planning Board. And it is not a duplication with our current consultant, Mark Fugere, who's helping us with regulatory changes, and is, is our wingman as we go through this complex process. But it will enhance our ability, it also will help us keep an eye and learn from what the other towns around us are doing. And one of the things I did when I first joined the Housing Commission was to look around and say, who's doing what we're doing, and maybe we can learn something. And I was impressed with Newbury's Housing Commission. They've done some, some good things, and we, I learned from them, and this will be an even better opportunity. So the Regional Planning Commission will be hiring this individual for a two-year term. Since there's a deadline, when the funding stops, it ends up being more like 18, 19 months, but this is a proposed permanent hire of the Regional Planning Commission, and we will be the focus for those funds. So the Housing Commission is in support of it, it is managed by the Regional Housing, Regional Planning Commission, and another group called Vital Communities, a nonprofit, smaller but similar concept. And so we're, Housing Commission has recommended approval of New London's participation in this Navigator grant.
As I was at your meeting this morning, the Plan Board met with the Housing Commission, and I've got to say, Peter, you all have done an amazing amount of work. So I'm definitely in support of this, if this is a way to coordinate what's happening in other towns, and give us direction that we're not even thinking about going in, that would be wonderful. So yeah, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you.
I definitely think it's a good idea. I'm very much in favor of multi-town undertakings, so, yes. So a motion, Janet, to approve the town's support of this?
Yes, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Public Works Request for Funds to Purchase a Meter Reading Equipment for Sewer Billing. Bob, this must be you.
So I'm here to request funds for a meter reader for the sewer department. Currently, we depend on the Springfield, New London Springfield Water Precinct, to do our readings for roughly about 750-plus or minus users. And we have our own reader gun that we use that's outdated. We can't upgrade it to the current system that the water department has. This system would actually work very well with theirs, it would save the town money as far as putting in the, the remotes. The ones the water department have already in place would work with this system. This would save a lot of aggravation, I should say. Currently, Nancy has to pull all this information out and physically put it in a computer, which leaves room for error.
Can Nancy take yours?
Yes, correct. The, the best part about this, I think, would be the fact that we have control. Right now, we're currently dependent upon the water department to get their readings in a timely manner, and what happens is if somebody's out sick, vacation, or whatever it might be, it puts us behind on our billing, and we'd like to see it more consistent. I think the taxpayers would appreciate that, that are in the sewer system. The system that we're looking into, we kind of played around with the idea that maybe there's something out there that would be better, but obviously, the software that is in place already, it's cheaper to go this route, it's under $20,000. And if the water department's guns go down, ours would work for theirs as well, and vice versa, which would help us out, so we have a backup plan, is one of the things we're looking at. We have two people in place at the sewer plant now, so it shouldn't be an issue as far as implementing them getting on track with getting the readings done. That's pretty much what we're looking at. Any questions?
Guns, what do you, what does that mean?
Basically, it's just a scan tool, kind of looks like this, or this. There's several different types, but it, it'll actually keep about 99 households in it, and then you get to reload whatever, however many more you need to do, so you can do it in sections if you want, that's currently what the water department does now. It's a rechargeable unit, it has a docking station that can be downloaded onto Nancy's computer, which, no more putting the numbers in physically, it'll all go in.
Bob, where is the funding for this supposed to come from? Or should I ask Lynn?
Lynn?
Kim, give me...
It's coming out, coming out of the sewer department, I understand that.
Yes, it would either come from the sewer department, or the ARPA funds that you've already dedicated to the sewer department, $112,000.
Okay, so existing, existing funds, okay. All right?
Yeah, absolutely. More accurate than everything.
Do you want to make a motion?
There is a fee that I should also make you aware of, it's a support fee of $3,600 a year.
Which I assume we'll see in your budget, in the budget.
Excuse me?
We will see that in the new budget. Great.
Any other questions?
I think so. I move that we purchase a meter reading equipment for the sewer department.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is acceptance of a gift of a watercolor painting of the Academy Building by Kirk Ramsey, which is on page, a picture of it is on page 12 of the current, of the 2020 town report. Kim?
Yes, the artist has contacted the town to ask if we would like to have the original watercolor painting, and so the selectmen do have the authority to accept gifts on behalf of the town, so if you would like to have it, yeah.
Motion.
I move that we accept the watercolor painted by Kirk Ramsey, it was of the Academy Building.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discuss meeting with the Energy Committee to explore solar and other energy issues that may apply to potential new police station site. This is my request, that this be on the agenda. I was in contact with Jamie Hess, the chairman of the Energy Committee, to ask if they would be willing to entertain having us come and talk to them about that. He said indeed for their meeting next Tuesday. I know you're not going to be here. Would it be all right if I went on behalf of the Selectmen?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple of moments here for public comments. Does anybody have anything that's not on the agenda tonight that they would like to bring up at this point? You have two and a half minutes.
I wanted to follow up, have we got any update on... Have we got any update on the Bukeur Speed Sign Project? Bunker, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for donations to come in. I've gotten one so far.
For the amount of?
$1,000.
And then we could purchase it and maybe solve that problem. Then I wanted to move to the October 21 Selectmen meeting, which was last Friday, and I wanted to ask, there was a Jones and Beach Engineering that is familiar with the Bruley property, will be, will be also reviewing the other properties that were listed originally in the consideration for the...
At a, at a recent meeting, John, the Selectmen voted to proceed, looking specifically at the 11-plus acres that we had agreed to try to purchase from Continuum. And so the effort for the engineer is focused on that particular site, because that's the site that we've agreed to try to purchase for the police station.
So that'll be the, the site, is that correct?
It'll be what?
That will be the site.
That is, that is the site we're trying to purchase at this point, and between now and the March town meeting, the Selectmen will be working with all the involved parties to determine if we can appropriately ask for the funding to buy the land.
And the, and the walkthrough, what are the advantages or the features to that property that Lieutenant Keith and Adam thought were...
I don't see any of the three of them here this evening, so I can't speak for them.
Okay, and this proposal to review, that is Jones and Beach, will be completed when?
When, it's, it's open-ended, so it'll be completed when we feel that they've provided the information that they agreed to provide as part of the contract.
Okay, and I also wanted to ask, on, on the New London Board of Selectmen... And I also wanted to ask, on, on the New London Board of Selectman meetings, like on the 21st, I couldn't find it on the website, and I didn't know how many days in advance that would be notified, and I didn't find it on the October list of meetings either.
Kim, you want to address the posting of meetings?
Sure. Meetings need to be posted at least 24 hours in advance. And I believe this meeting, which was not a regular meeting, so it wasn't known when that previous agenda was composed. So I believe that meeting was posted, say, Wednesday. I would say Wednesday. So it was more than 24 hours in advance.
Right. And is that a rule? Does it have to be 24 hours?
It has to be 24 hours unless it's an emergency. And if it's an emergency, it could be less than 24.
Right, I understood that. So it couldn't be two days ahead of time, or?
Sure, it could be a week. It could be as much in advance as we know, but it must be a minimum of 24 hours.
Right. And is there a reason? We had discussed, I think, back in August, of meetings occurring in the afternoon or at 6 o'clock so that more people could attend those. This one was, as you know, at 9:30.
Yep.
Is there a reason it was at 9:30 versus?
Yeah, this one was at 9:30 to accommodate Nancy Rollins's time. And I'm going to cut you off now, John, because I'm a minute beyond the time that the Budget Committee, the hearing is, meeting is supposed to begin. Thank you. Okay. It is now 6:31, actually, and we're going to move to the agenda item to continue reviewing the fiscal year 2024 budget. And I would ask the Budget Committee members to come right up front here. Don't be bashful. First item on the, that we're going to look at is the tax collector and town clerk, who is already at the podium, ready to go. Sure.
Colin Beasley. I'm just trying to understand procedurally. So we've been through a few meetings.
Yep.
Questions, answers from public, Budget Committee, Select Board.
Yep.
Is the Selectman taking a list of those items? And are we going to see recommendations for changes at the end of the session? Or do we assume that with every budget, it's being accepted as proposed? How's it going to play out here?
No, I think it's fair to say that what each of us has been doing individually is making our notes about the issues so that we can get a picture, at least I'll say, speak for myself, so that we have an overall picture of what the issues might be for the budget. Obviously, with Nancy having been absent.
Understood.
We haven't been able to include her in that. But I assume that she has, is going to have the opportunity, or has had the opportunity, to look at the recordings of these meetings. So she'll be fully up to speed on what's happened. And depending on how far we get tonight, it may be that as early as next Thursday night, we'll begin to deliberate on what things we would accept and what things we'd like to change.
Good, okay. That's, I, that's what I want to understand. Great, thank you, appreciate it.
But certainly having Nancy absent has curtailed some of our ability to do that. Okay, Will.
Okay.
Page one of the, for the Budget Committee, we're on page one.
Yeah, I'm going to go town clerk, tax collector, then elections. So, under the town clerk, I have asked for an increase of $425 plus whatever the standard cola and employment expense ups would be. The reason for the $425 is we have a conference once a year. It is super nice for us to go to because as town clerk, you're sort of an island within the town, and it's nice to meet all the other islands and all that sort of stuff. So in the budget before, I don't believe oftentimes the other deputy assistant has gone. I think it's important for Diane to go, and I think it's worth the extra $425. And that gets us two nights of hotel rooms rather than one. And like this year, we drove back and forth one night and stayed the other. But I think it would be better, particularly as it, you know, this time it was Manchester. Oftentimes, it's way up north, and it's not quite as easy to drive back and forth. So that is the question, that's my increase in town clerk. Questions, comments?
Why don't you go, oh, Mark, why don't we let him go through all three of his pieces, and then we'll, we'll circle around.
Okay. Tax collector. We are going to go up by $250 plus the employment stuff. You know, that, the tax bills are going to be a little bit more expensive for the printing and mailing of those, as is the stationery, which is the envelopes they go in.
Tax collector's on page three, for those who are trying to follow where Will is. Go ahead.
Okay. Moving on to elections, then.
Okay, nothing in there. Elections is back on page one, two, I mean.
So, with elections, I do just want to touch on Michael Todd again, and I know this is in Kim's part of the budget. That guy is essential to what we do for elections. We're lucky to have him as moderator. The increase, you know, it's well worth it. Being good at a moderator takes a lot of time. And I have, he already hates me for the November election with how much I've ruined his week. So, you know, I just, again, would say, please give Michael Todd that extra money. He's well worth it. Then you get to the poll pads. What poll pads are, is if you picture an iPad on a stand, there would be three of them across here where you check in at the check-in lines and one at the supervisors of the checklist. What that does is it allows us to reduce the check-in time down to about 45 seconds from what can occasionally, when you're watching it from the stage, seem like forever. As somebody flips through a book and that sort of stuff, this, you put your ID in front of it, it pops it up, or you type in the first three of the last name and you hit a button. It will also eliminate the letters in the check-in lines. So you would walk up to A-line, there's no more A to G. It's just anybody goes to any line. That is a pretty essential thing. Because what we ran into in September is when one line gets too long, we then change the letters in that line. And then what happens is you're changing the pages from the book to another book, and it is just fraught with danger and gives us heart attacks every time we do that. So it would get rid of that. It would also increase accuracy because there's no remembering to check off. There's, you click for AV. It's very simple to do. It also makes post-election reports instantaneously available. And you sit there and you go, and it prints out everything you need, rather than us sitting there and going through the books and trying to figure out what somebody was actually thinking when they did the wrong thing on there, which takes up a lot of time. Also, it might help us with getting some younger people if they, they like screens and pads and that sort of stuff. So if that would entice some younger folks to come on board, that would be great. It does need to get approved by the Secretary of State, who has already approved us. I talked to him again at our conference, and he thinks it's a great idea and would love to see us get on board with it. I've talked to other town clerks in some of the bigger towns and that sort of stuff. They love it. I couldn't get anybody to say anything negative about the situation. So that is a glowing recommendation. What it breaks down to money-wise is there's a one-time cost of $8,300. There's a $1,200 a year guaranteed that would be the warranty and software support for them. And then there's a $300 fee per election. So that fee would range between $300 and $1,200 per year, depending upon how many elections we have. Bill, oftentimes, like, you know, why now? So here's why now and not later. And this isn't really a why now, but I just want people to remember that in 2020, there was the CARES Act money that we got for doing over and above the normal absentee ballot rate. And that was a $19,889, $889.47 bump that we got from that. Some of it was obviously used to offset the costs of the election on your side, of the Selectman getting it ready. The election team didn't get any of that, and I'm not in any way saying that we're owed that. I just want people to think about that in the back of their head. Also, the biggest reason for me, well, maybe not the biggest reason, but one of the big ones, is the presidential election in 2024. That's a biggie that keeps election people up at night. You know, if we do it now, we would be able to get them in the fall of '23. There has not been a major elections expense since 1998, when we spent $5,800 on the election machine. I don't know how many of you guys have stuff from 1998 that's electronics in your house, but I don't have much. So that is coming down the pike. The voting booths are getting a little tough. And there's also the possibility of having to get to a point where we pay poll workers. That's not something that's an immediate thing, but lots of places are doing that. And it's not uncommon for towns to have to pay $20 an hour for their volunteers for the elections. So part of me wants, you know, just, I just don't want all this to back up and for me to be standing here saying, I need $50,000 in an emergency sort of way at some point. So this would start the trickle of that. Also, the final reason, I guess, is, you know, myself and the elections team, we're charged with running the best elections that we can in New London. I know you got a letter from Michael Todd stating that he's in favor of this. You know, we're fairly on board that this is, you know, running the best election possible in New London includes these poll pads. So we would very much like you to consider them.
Will, what about training for the people who are maybe older and aren't as familiar with the technology? How long does it take normally to bring somebody up to speed?
I haven't done it myself, but I have been told by the town clerks and the towns that have it and the people that sell the equipment, we get, we get the training as part of buying them. So they would come and run a training for our volunteers. Nobody has had any issues. It's, it's easier to train somebody on a poll pad than it is on a checklist because you're just tapping buttons and it's leading you through the situation. It's not, there's a lot going on in checklists. And this makes a lot of the confusing stuff about checklists go into the background, and you're just getting the person, whether they're absentee voter or that sort of stuff. So it, I think it's an advantage there.
Mark?
Not necessarily, just a clarification.
You need Mark because we're recording you, you're going to have to go up there, please.
Thank you. Mark Christensen, Budget Committee. Actually, I just want to take a moment and say I strongly encourage our community to have a modern and secure voting experience. So thank you. And my question is actually clarification. Could you just go back and revisit the hotel travel that you were talking about earlier?
Sure. It's just, it's the difference between staying for two nights and one night. So the $425 is a hotel room for each of us for the first night of the conference or the second night, depending upon which one. The location will vary. It used to be at the Red Jacket North Conway, but obviously that had some fire issues, so we weren't there this year. So in an emergency, they changed it to Manchester. So I don't know where it will be next year. But generally, they like to do it up north in that sort of area because it's in the fall, and it's a nice and a good place to spotlight New Hampshire.
Lindsey?
Thank you, Will. I don't actually have a question. I just want to make a public comment because you've been talking about technology and the advancements. And as we look around, we are very much further advanced. And so I had erroneously gotten into kind of a conversation with some of our taxpayers, and I thought our streaming capacity was, you know, full hog, but it's not quite there. But I do know that, you know, Will and many others spend a lot of time putting our meetings online so that people can view them. So I just want to say thank you and all your efforts. I know it might not even be under your purview, but I do appreciate it. And hopefully that clarified it for some of our other taxpayers.
Thank you. There have been some comments around about why we don't have live Zoom connections for, in this room, and that's still being worked on. It was not included in the original package as we thought it was going to be. And so we're working on it, but we are recording all of our Selectman's meetings in this room, and we recorded the Planning Board on Tuesday night. So we're working on it. Thank you, Lindsey. Anybody else? Chris, we're just getting through with, with Will, so you're?
John.
Okay, so we'll move.
No, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see your hand behind Mark. Sorry. So, Will, maybe I just missed it, but what's the total bottom line of this upgrade that you're talking about?
$10,000.
$10,000?
$10,700.
Did you say that before, and I missed it?
I said it in two different chunks. I didn't have the total total.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, thanks. Other questions for Will?
And the $10,700 includes the high of the, assuming there's a four election in the year.
John, this is only going to be, I'm only going to take questions from the Budget Committee tonight so we can get through everything. Lou?
Yes, sir. Okay. Just, hi, Lou Bottom, Budget Committee. Just wanted to ask, Will, if by any chance there is any consideration to additional stepped-up security for presidential election? And if that is reflected in the budget, please?
Yes, there's been some conversations about that and some things that we would like to do to make it better. I'm not completely sure that it's something I want to talk about publicly so that we know, but there is some stuff going on behind the scenes that have been asked to upgrade this building. And Michael Todd, I think, in that particular election, will probably ask for full-time people being here the whole time.
Lou, just to clarify the calendar here, in fiscal '24, which goes through June 30 of '24, we will only have the primaries. The actual November election will come up in fiscal '25. Now, I have to keep thinking about how these fiscal years work.
Yeah, and there, there may be a request then, but I don't, I don't know enough now to be able to say that for sure.
So I think, I'm sorry, what Will, when he said, "Use it for the presidential election", he meant we're going to hopefully be able to use this system as a, in the primaries.
Right. We want to, we want to get warmed up and know what we're doing before. We don't want the presidential election to be our first go at this thing, having had it for two weeks beforehand. That, to me, is disaster. And the other thing, too, that I didn't mention is, at this moment in time, you run that system at the same time as doing a paper thing. So you have a paper trail as well. That may not exist when we get ours, but I think we will probably do that the first time just so that we have a check and balance, and we know that it's working as well as it should.
Yeah, if I can add, in, not only as far as the budget, but also, you know, the, the other, the other item is in emergency management. I would ask that we familiarize ourselves with the LEOP, Local Emergency Operations Plan, because it does contain an item about security considerations for the town. That's, and, and they kind of dovetail both the budget and, and future primary and presidential elections. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Anybody else for the?
You, you don't know it yet, but you'll be enlisted to help.
So, John Wilson, would you just move about three inches to your right so I can just see you when you put your hand up? That'd be great. No, just move your chair slightly.
I don't want to scare you.
See, I've got a direct shot for Joe and Colin in the back, so, great. Okay, Personnel Administration, Kim?
Okay. Let us move this so everybody can see it. Page four, right?
Page four.
Page four. Okay. Okay, so the bulk of this, or at least the first, what, four, are for the library. And the library reimburses the town for those costs. There are health insurance, disability insurance, FICA and Medicare. So those are sort of, those are reimbursable. The other ones, leave time buyout, that's the amount of money that if a, an employee left, terminated their employment with the town, their leave, their, the leave time that they had saved up would be payable to them. So that line is for that in the event an employee leaves who has leave saved up. The second one is the health insurance deductibles. The town pays, there's a $1,000 deductible for health, employee health insurance plans. It's $1,000 for a single, $2,000 for a two-person, and $3 for a family. The town pays up to $1,000 should an employee have expenses that are subject to deductible. The town pays up to $1,000 should an employee have expenses that are subject to deductible. And the final thing is tuition reimbursement, which you can see I've reduced down to 500. We haven't had employees use it in some time, so we did reduce it down. If an employee did ask for tuition reimbursement, the selectman could decide to transfer money into that line if they wanted. But given that employees haven't used it in several years, I thought it prudent to reduce it.
Janet, any questions for Kim?
No.
Anybody in the Budget Committee have questions for Kim on that? Crystal, I think you're up. Library time.
The library budget?
Library budget is on page 15, just to do some thumbing here. Oops. And actually, we just have a total number, so she's gonna have to tell us how it's being spent.
I'm sorry.
Say, we just have a total number here of $635,000. We don't have any breakdowns, so.
Yes, yes. And I did provide a breakdown of the library's budget with our submission as well as a memo. And that outlines the breakdown of our proposed budget. Sorry, I'm just getting set up here. Forgive me. So the way the library budget works is that the Library Board of Trustees, and we have a few library trustees present tonight, approve the line items for our budget. And then what comes to the town for approval is our overall single-line appropriation. And so the detail of the budget is provided for information and reference and to be transparent about our plans for the funds. And it is just the appropriation total that goes to the town meeting. So that's why there's only one line.
So, Crystal, I don't know if everybody has their books with them tonight, but if they do, what we're looking at is in Section 5, about halfway through, is the detailed budget that is, as Crystal said, has been provided us.
Correct.
So the reference just to page 15 doesn't get us very far. We've got to go into the weeds here.
That's right.
Keep going.
And so the library is requesting a town appropriation amount of $635,338. And that is an 8.7% increase over our fiscal year 2023 budget. And that amount accounts for 88% of the total library budget for fiscal year 2024. The remaining amount is covered by other library funding sources. The overall expenditures increase that we are looking at is 7.8%, so that is our bottom line for expenditures for fiscal year 2024. The primary reasons for the increase of 8.7% and our overall budget expenditure increase are inflation, cost of living, so quite a lot in our personnel costs, and also just the ways in which we are planning improvements to our services over pre-pandemic levels in order to meet community needs better moving forward, and that needing to be managed and delivered by staff, by people. And so our personnel costs are the largest item in our budget. And we see that increasing 10.1% overall. The benefits portion of that is a higher increase, and that's because of the estimated increase in our health benefits in particular, and also because during fiscal year 2022, the Library Board of Trustees approved an increase in staffing level to 7.5 FTE, which included one new full-time position, so one more person receiving health benefits. It does take 3.5 FTEs or full-time equivalents to keep the library open at our minimum staffing level for the 42 hours per week that we are open to the public. And so the remainder of that is where we're able to take care of our administrative and planning responsibilities, also ordering books and getting them onto the shelves and making sure that they're cataloged so people can access them, and our numerous digital resources that we have as well. So there's quite a lot of time that goes into that management of the library. The other area that I think is worth noting that is high and is increasing is our maintenance area. We're looking at inflation increases across the board and also have noted that in some cases, we had underbudgeted for the needs of the library in some critical areas. Our building is from 1823, and so not only do we have larger projects on the horizon, but we have a lot of maintenance to keep up, to take care of the building itself. So we do have those expenses there and are trying to plan ahead accordingly so that we don't find ourselves in trouble later and not having the funds for just the ongoing maintenance. I'll also note that we have increased some of the ongoing inspections and checks that we have on our systems to make sure that they don't fail over time. And so those are now being incorporated into the budget. And the last area that has a kind of higher amount there is under the trustee expense, and that is because the Library Board of Trustees plans to begin a strategic planning process in our current fiscal year and carry that into the next fiscal year. This process is critical. I don't think it's been done for many years, and it's really important for us to take that planning on in order to truly understand and meet the needs of the community and to identify other space and materials needs that we may have to take the library forward. And so that is, I think, a very important area of our budget.
So you're hiring someone?
We're looking to bring in a consultant to help manage that process. It is quite time-consuming for an organization to take on strategic planning without outside help. Yeah.
Kim, can, or Lynn, can I ask you? Crystal mentions that she's already put some increases in benefit costs in. Is that, are you, are we coordinated there or what's? Because the information that we have in the book here was published before we knew what the guaranteed maximum was going to be for health insurance.
Right. She did include a full-timer and we included that.
Got that part. I think it also said increased benefits.
Right.
Yes, I can explain that. So yes, we had submitted this prior to knowing the updated estimate. And so it was already a pretty high estimate when I created this budget. And in the meantime, we hired a full-time person and had some adjustments to the benefit levels for that employee. And that means we're able to kind of absorb the difference from the increase without any changes to that line.
I guess I'm trying to understand whether the 26% increase here includes the now projected healthcare.
It does.
It does?
It does. Because we had an adjustment internally that affected our personnel budget.
Right. I gave her a spreadsheet of her employees and what their costs were, and they included an increase automatically. That's up to them. To when they came up with that line item budget, they also had budgeted. When we don't know who we're gonna fill a position for, we budget as a family for health care.
I understand that.
So when that person came on, they didn't utilize the full family benefits, so that's gonna absorb the difference. So they're good on their number.
So when we go through to adjust our numbers for health insurance for all the other departments, they aren't gonna be affected by that increase?
The item that they were, yeah, correct. The item that we talked about just a few minutes ago, where they, those line items that they reimburse us for, we have revenue, that's a pretty accurate number.
Okay.
It's gonna change by, I think, like $400.
Thank you. Okay, got that. Janet, anything else?
No.
Lindsay, were you about to ask a question? Anybody else on the Budget Committee? Want to talk to the library about the library budget? All silence, okay. So we will now move on to recreation. I think I see Putnam in the back. Yes. Page 14.
Hi, my name is Putnam Kidder, and I'm the Part-Time Recreation Director. So we are presenting a budget this year, and I can go through and talk about the changes if people want to do it that way. That's the easiest, okay. So the biggest change we'd be looking at, one of the bigger ones, is to increase waterfront wages for the staff, an increase of $6,000. And we think about the importance of competing with other wages in the area for this age group. Those are going up, and we want to retain qualified staff. We want to have people coming back if we can in the year after year. That's much easier than training new people. So we want to offer a competitive wage to people and entice them to be able to come and work for our beaches over the summer. So that was increased at the recommendation of the Rec Commission, and I think that's a wise, prudent choice. Any questions about that aspect of it?
Go through the whole thing.
All right, go through the whole thing. Okay. And then there was the Recording Secretary fee of $1,000 was taken off in that the Rec Director, I'm choosing to take minutes for the meetings, so we'll have a less $1,000 there, so that'll be a change there. I'll take the meeting minutes for the Rec Commission, any other things we need to do. And then we had an increase of $200 for phones, and I believe that has to do with the phone contract. We have a cell phone for the Rec Director, and then we have phone here, and then we have phones at the beaches that are needing to be maintained. The other bigger increase was of conferences and training, and that increase was targeted at two parts, having in-service trainings for our staff, three over the course of the summer. We have a kind of a private contractor that works with our beach staff and myself to offer the skills to be able to train these guards in the kind of highest level of safe operations of beaches. So we found that those consistent trainings, we did two of them this summer, really help out the staff feel more comfortable and more confident in their job, being able to do it more effectively. And have that hands-on training is really, really helpful. We did one this summer where we were able to have the fire department come and join, and that was really nice to be able to have some collaboration between our staff and the fire department so that if anything ever did happen, those two would be more familiar with each other and the protocols they need to do. So we would have that. And then also, as another incentive, we offer our employees, lifeguards, is that we will reimburse them for the certification cost that it costs for them to get licensed, because we have to have a license to be a lifeguard. So as an incentive, we'll say we'll cover that and we'll reimburse you for that. So we're gonna have a fair number of them coming due this year. It's a two-year cycle, so many of the ones that were certified through us two years ago will be coming due, so we wanted to factor that in. And it's just a really nice opportunity to be able to, it's a good incentive for the staff to come back, so we knew that that was gonna be happening as well. But yeah, I think the conference, the training is really, really important, and just like the increase in the waterfront wages is only going to benefit us with more qualified staff, better-trained staff. And then we had an increase of the money from the Recording Secretary that is gonna go towards advertising. So instead of $1,000 for advertising, we're taking the extra thousand that we won't be using for the Recording Secretary and putting it towards advertising. The costs are increasing at the shopper. And also, I think it's just really, really important for us to have as broad a kind of promotional strategy as we can when we're trying to promote our events and programs that we have. And there's a lot of different ways people get this information, whether it's Facebook, online, through the shopper, flyers, things like that. So I think we really want to try to have as much promotion as we can. And that seemed like, again, being able to take some of that money and put towards an increased advertising budget, I felt like that was another prudent expense. And the other, I guess, the other one that is with the decision to do a full-time director, the money that was in the activity fund goes towards the director's salary. So that's another change. So the activity fund was deemed to, when there was a part-time director, they said, well, let's take some of the money we would have used to have a full-time director and put it towards an activity fund that would be able to be accessed by community groups that would come, apply, or talk to the Recreation Commission for that money.
So Lynn, this is probably a question for you. I know that we gave the outing club $40,000. We've given them more money. Where did that money, I don't see it listed here. Where'd that come from? The extra money we gave them for fields?
Oh, we found the field, so.
Yeah.
That was the activity.
That was, that came from the activity?
There's a separate line item for $40,000 to help fund their funding for the outing club.
Yeah, but then...
That's 40, and then there was an activity fund that was separate from the 40.
Okay.
So the sum of that money for the fields came out of that second line item. The 40 was spent.
Right. Yeah. Where would I find the?
It's right underneath the funding for the outing club.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No?
So my sort of summary of this, a lot of pluses and minuses, but basically, the increase is going toward the staffing of the beach, the training of those people, the certification of them, and so on, and a lot of other pluses and minuses. But the increase, the overall increase is related to the beachfront staffing and the training and certification of the beach. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. Mark Christensen, Budget Committee. What is the anticipated hourly rate for the beach staff?
So this summer, we had between a rate of $14 to $18, and that depends on who comes back. If a newer person would be at the lower end of that. So we would like to be in that range about for next year. That would be our goal, and we want to be able to have kids who come back, to be able to give them a small raise if we can, to have them, you know, have a returning employee. So it's kind of hard to know whether we're gonna have all new people, which we can pay at a lower rate, or we're gonna have more returning people where we have to pay at a higher rate.
14.
Yes, that's what we did this summer, and that might change a little bit, but I'd like to kind of keep it in that range. And the staffing with the beaches also completely is dependent on the weather. So that's, we had a really sunny summer this summer, so we had a lot of days. But, you know, that can ebb and flow too, depending on the weather.
Budget Committee, other? John?
Can I see your hand? Yep. Now I can see it. Yep, thanks.
Hi, John Wilson. But as I understand it here, with the idea of you going full-time or having a full-time director.
John, talk to the Speaker.
Having a full-time director, can you hear me now? Yeah. With the added salary and with the benefits, I come up with about $72,000 added costs. Now, I know at the previous meeting that Chris and Putt sort of explained how this was coming out of the activities fee, but for someone who is a little thick-like, I could either, Putt, explain this more?
John, if, the last line, the Recreation Activity Fund, was $70,000 this year.
Yep.
And that's going to zero and being replaced with the $72,000 that you just calculated.
Okay.
So that's the trade-off.
Okay.
That was why I asked.
So $2,000 in the balance then, right? Something like that. Okay.
That's guessing now what the salary will be and what the benefits will cost and so on.
Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Did I do okay on that one? Okay. Anybody else? Back, front, okay? Thank you, Putt, Putnam. New London Bike Walk Coalition, Russ. Russ Moore, for those who don't know him. This is a new request, so it's not in our budget packages.
Yes, thanks for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. And I wasn't able to make the presentation by other nonprofits, so thanks for flexibility in terms of accommodating my requests. So the first part of my request is for bike racks for three locations, one at the town offices, Elkins Beach, and Buckland Beach. The Recreation Commission unanimously recommended replacing the bike racks. The Recreation Commission unanimously recommended replacing the bike racks at the two beaches, and I did put this request in front of the Select Board previously, but at least at this time, I understand that it's not possible to fund that this fiscal year. But what we want to install are bike racks that can be secured by the bike frame in two locations and can be anchored to the ground, and each rack would accommodate eight bikes. So in talking to Putnam and other folks from the Recreation Commission, there are, there's quite a bit of traffic, particularly at Buckland, of children and young and adolescents going to the beach by bike, and there is clearly inadequate storage for the bikes. So I did a pretty thorough investigation or research into various options for the bikes, looking at a number of vendors, and we're able to enjoy some discounts by actually working with Village Sports or another bike shop to get a commercial rate for the racks. So that would be $10,000 for, as a new request, and we would possibly be able to get those for slightly less. And we have volunteers in the New London Bike Walk Coalition who could assist with the installation of those. So I know that, again, it'll be a very challenging fiscal situation in 2024, but I think that this is not a substantial amount of money, and will have some clear community benefits for us. The second request is for an engineering study of $12,000 that would be done through the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission to basically create the mechanism for us to move forward with the downtown business bike loop, which is a proposal where we would promote access to Main Street and Main Street businesses by bike and by pedestrians using some alternate routes that parallel Main Street. And it would, this project would occur in three phases. What I want to emphasize is that the New London Bike Walk Coalition is committed to researching and securing grants in collaboration with the town and other entities for this study. And if you look at sort of the economic and recreational benefits of this kind of a project, there's been extensive studies in other communities where every dollar that's invested in pedestrian and bike projects returns approximately $8. And there will be clear benefits to downtown businesses if we move ahead with this preliminary project planning. So I hope that the Board of Selectmen will take this under very careful consideration, and we look forward to working with the town in partnership with, as long, as well as other entities to make New London a very bike-safe and walk-safe community. Thank you.
Russ, don't leave yet. You may get questions. Janet?
No, I don't want to make questions.
So, so Russ, you and I have had some discussions about this. Back on the bike loop issue, are you just saying that's something you want to do, but it's going to be covered by grants? Or are you looking for money in the budget to contribute to that study?
I'm, as I, as I framed in my request, I was looking for $12,000 from the town, and what I'm saying is, we, the Coalition will also make an effort to generate grants, and, and we may not need $12,000.
That was my question, because you just mentioned grants here, and you didn't, I wasn't sure whether you had slipped back from?
Yeah, we do not have secured at this time grants, but I think that there is the possibility of offsetting some of those expenses, and it may be a situation where the town contributes six, and we secure $6,000 in grants. I think that is a likely scenario, but I just can't make that guarantee for you now.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Budget Committee, any questions for us? Lindsay? Yes, you do. Because of the recording. It's not very far to walk.
Yeah. So is this, are we to consider this within this year's budget, or are you just presenting it as an overall idea going forward?
Well, Russ has asked the Selectmen to expend the money for the bike racks this year, and we have told him we don't think that's likely to happen, given the other issues we've got with this year's budget. And so he's now coming and asking for the fiscal year 24 budget to have money for bike racks and for the bike loop put into the budget.
Copy that. No, I, I just need some clarification.
Yeah, that's, so he's tried, he's tried this year, and we haven't been very encouraging.
Well, I don't want to be discouraged. I really, I just wanted to clarify.
Anybody else on the Budget Committee on this one? Okay, moving on. Kim, I think you've got a couple here that you're going to cover. I don't see Jim here. Archives and Patriot, Patriotic Purposes, page 15.
First up is Patriotic Purposes. And as you can see, we haven't spent the $300 in some years, but we continue to put it in in the event that we can find some individual or committee to take up the mantle that Bob McMichael used to do year after year, putting on displays or events for Memorial Day and Veterans Day, things like that. So I would suggest you keep the $300, and we continue to look for somebody to spearhead that.
Okay, while you're at it, you want to talk about archives? I don't think Jim Perkins is here.
Yes, Jim, Jim was not able to come this evening, and he asked me to represent this budget. You may recall from last year that he's beginning a project of purchasing new shelving for archives, and if you haven't seen them yet, phase one is done, and it's amazing project. The shelves move, so they can stack them all, and you can bring them down. So they're very, they're really excellent equipment. So the increase for 18,818 is for the second phase of it.
Janet? Nope. Budget Committee, any questions on those two? Okay, Conservation, Bob Brown. Page 16. For those following. Typically, the Conservation Commission's operating budget has been in the 18, $19,000 a year range, which covers a number of things, right, from recording secretary to the 32 miles of hiking trails that we have to maintain, which is the biggest part of our budget in terms of material costs and labor. Most all of our labor is volunteer labor. This year, we are asking for, I think it works out to about a 9% increase, a little bit under $2,000, and that is almost 100% because of cost of materials. Lumber costs, in some cases, have gone up three times, three times the normal price, and although there are some folks who are waiting for the 2018 prices to return, I'm not holding my breath, unfortunately. Some of the lumber prices have gone down. We shop very, very hard. We have returned, to some degree, using native hemlock. We switched over primarily to pressure-treated, because it lasts so much longer. And now that we've had 10, 12 years of the two materials onsite on the trails, we can judge pretty closely that pressure-treated lasts probably 50% longer. And of course, it's so labor-intensive, we're very concerned about the cost of material, but we also have to remember, somebody has to carry a lot of this a mile into the woods and then put it in place. So we're using both, depending on the application. But that's really our, the reason for our increase. I don't know, there's any questions on other specific items? Kim? Budget Committee, any questions on conservation? Okay, Bob, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Kim, I think there's nobody here from the Energy Committee, I believe, but it's, again, just like patriotic purposes.
Well, I do think, I think their fiscal year 2022 budget, they didn't have expenditures, and I think that was mainly because of the pandemic and they didn't have events, but I do expect that there, although it says zero expenditure expended so far, that the Energy Committee will be.
But they're not asking for any more.
They're not asking for any more, no.
Kim, do you have any questions about energy? Budget Committee, energy, anybody? Housing, Peter, do you want to speak to it? We're still on page 16.
I'll keep it brief. We talked a little bit about the work of the Housing Commission and addressing the matter of workforce housing. Given the budget lag, we're talking about 2024. This will be after, hopefully, a meeting of, a vote of town meeting in March of 2023 on some regulatory suggestions that we're, our commission is now reviewing with the Planning Board. Hopefully, the Planning Board will adopt them, and at least in, in major part, and will take them as a prudent measure to put forward to the community in 2023 in March. So this budget is for continuation of a consultant that will help us take that platform that we earned from the vote in 2023. We'll receive approvals from, I hope, all of what we propose and the Planning Board proposes, but whatever is approved or not, we'll use as our platform for continuing our work, and, and we are benefiting immensely, as the town is, from the work of our consultant. He's a, he's an expert. We have immense respect for him, and he's doing a good job. So this is primarily for the consultant's work.
Janet?
No.
Budget Committee, any questions for Peter? Okay.
Thank you.
So that takes care of all of the town departments, I believe. Am I right, Lynn, Kim? Unless I've missed something here?
I don't think we did other, under other conservation, we did the milfoil, that's the lake protective associations and the garden club, but care of trees, that is our tree warden, Dave Carey, and that line item is for pruning of trees, planting new trees, that kind of thing.
Okay. Lindsay, go ahead.
Lindsay Arkins, I had asked, just because I had the agenda from last year, I happened to notice that Sunapee's request for funding for their lake association had risen, I think about $3,000 or $4,000. Did you hear back from them?
Yeah, and I, I'm going to be inviting her to make sure she comes in when the Budget Committee takes up the issue.
Perfect.
But I can tell you now, if you want to, you can wait until then.
Yeah, go, go for it.
The executive director says that it's based on the value, the waterfront value of the properties. It's not the distance of shoreline, which is what I think you were thinking, it's the assessed value of the property.
I don't, it's just, we don't have a boat drop there. I don't want anybody's value, property value to go down because of milfoil. I was just curious how they factored it.
And I'm going to make sure that she comes in, since she missed the Selectmen's review. And so you'll be able to ask her more detailed questions.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so I think, Janet, do you have any other questions about town departments at this, at this point? Okay, so now we're going to move to some of the other financial issues. On the agenda is the presentation of the capital improvement program. The Ball Gorman is not here. The Selectmen have received officially the capital improvement program document from the Planning Board, and since Nancy is not here tonight, I would suggest, Janet, that we pass over reviewing that until Nancy is here.
Definitely.
Okay. Does anybody on the Budget Committee want to talk about the capital improvement program? Or are you willing to wait until the next meeting or two? Okay, thank you. So then the next item is bonded debt, principal and interest, pages 16 and 17. Lynn, are you going to handle that?
I am. Well, not much has changed from last year. I haven't, I have not gone out for the bond for Whipple Building, but it's still on there. All the other debt has remained the same. I have not included yet any of the requests, the land acquisition that we might do. And I think Bob is, is looking for some for his sewer, but that doesn't affect this. If you want to talk about cost on that, potential cost on the $6,000, I can, I can, you know, go over that. But this is basically for debt we've already incurred or appropriated for.
I think we'll talk about debt, principal and debt service for new bonds when we get farther down, down the road here.
Okay.
Okay. So any, anybody on the Budget Committee want to dive anymore into that tonight? We obviously, before we get through this whole process, we'll be dealing with at least two potential bond issues, one for the sewer department and one related to the land purchase for the police station. Okay, the next item, tax anticipated notes, do you just want to quickly tell us what that small amount of money is for?
It's a dollar, just a placeholder in case, for some reason, we needed to go out and borrow money in anticipation of tax revenue that we have not yet received. I don't think Kim ever remembers us actually having to do that, but we do put it in as a placeholder, just in case.
Okay. So then the next item on the agenda is capital reserve funds, and I want to move, first of all, to the second part of that, which is the transfers to the capital reserve funds, because I'd like to have a little conversation about that tonight with, with Janet and perhaps with the Budget Committee, obviously with Nancy not here. It's going to be a very preliminary discussion, but if you, again, go to page 19, you will see that the currently projected transfers to capital reserves for the fiscal year 24 totals just shy of $1 million. And I want to propose that for the current budget cycle, that we reduce all of those projected transfers by 50%, so that we reduce the amount of money that we're talking about transferring to capital reserves to $500,000 rather than close to $1 million. And my reasoning for doing that, and this may come, Colin, to part of your question at the beginning about our deliberations, and I want to get this issue on the table now, because I believe that as we get down to the decisions that we're going to have to make in the next two to three weeks, Janet, that we're going to find that the increased cost of wages, compensation, and then benefits for our employees is going to be so significant along with a number of the well-intentioned requests that we've had for additional spending from all of the departments, that we're going to find ourselves in a position where we have to make some fairly significant decisions about expenditures. And, and I believe that while capital reserves are extraordinarily important, it's been some while since the town has actually taken a look at our, our process for determining the appropriate level of capital reserves and for the question of capital reserves versus pay-as-you-go versus a long-term funding of some of those issues rather than putting the money away day by day. And I think when we get into a period of time, like we're in right now, with very high inflation, very significant current operating issues for the budget, that we have to ask, take into consideration the taxpayer and what he or she is willing to pay, and I think, at least my position, is going to be that we have to take care of our employees first, last, and always. The cost of turnover is far more significant than the cost will be of what we're going to have to deal with in terms of wages and benefits. And so I think that's going to be a priority for me, and in order to pay for that priority for at least one year, I think we need to step back in terms of what I consider to be very generous funding that we do for our, in our capital reserves, and to ask the Selectmen and the Budget Committee to sit down after this cycle is over with and really rethink what we're doing in total with capital reserves. So my sort of... So my sort of beginning proposal is going to be an across-the-board reduction of 50% in those numbers. Having said that, I'll now let Janet, Janet has just heard about this, so she may not have had time to think about it, but I'll let her comment if she wants to, and then I'll turn to the Budget Committee.
Yeah, you know, I think it's definitely a good proposal, and I think we should go through all the items. I think there are some that we may want to eliminate entirely this year. So I think that, you know, after Nancy's had an opportunity to look at the capital reserves and we've had a chance to think about it, I think maybe in the very near future, we discuss this.
I'm hoping that, since we have a little bit of time tonight, that we want to get an initial reaction from the Budget Committee. And Lindsay, you had your hand up before Mark, so you...
Lindsay Harkins, I'm actually also on the capital improvement committee. And so I guess I wanted a little bit of clear clarification if we are to have the funding for capital reserves. How does that impact some of the planned capital improvements that my committee, other committee, has made decisions on? Do we need to re-meet? Do we need to, you know, I understand, I just, I just need a little clarification.
Well, I think that's part of what we're, and delaying discussing the CIP report tonight.
Right.
But obviously, a number of the CIP report items are reflected in the requests that are here on this sheet. I haven't had a chance, since I just got this, to see if these numbers coincide with the numbers that are in the budget for FY '24 or not.
I have not.
We're very much in a working mode.
Yeah.
Working mode suddenly now tonight. So these numbers may or may not be the same numbers that are here.
Right.
And in any case, my sort of stake in the ground here is, let's see if we can get down transferring to capital reserve to something like $500,000 in FY '24 as opposed to a million or more, depending on how these numbers tie out.
Sure. And just for public record, we're talking about making this cut because of the cost of inflation and some economic projections, as well as the school budget being increased. Right now, it's like 8.5%. So...
Well, you know, I have, you've shared the school budget with us. You know, we're not responsible here for the school budget. I think that's another whole set of issues that the town needs to hop onto as to why the school department seems to feel they can increase their budget by 8% or 9% while we're going to work very hard to keep the budget in this town down to a much lower number. I don't think any of us are ready to commit to the exact number yet, but I'm quite certain in my own analysis so far that the cost of employee wages and compensation and benefits is going to be, along with some of the other proposals that have been made by the department heads, is going to be so significant that we're going to have to do something. And it plays well into my concern that for some while, we haven't taken a good, close look at how we do capital reserves anyway. And so it gives an opportunity for the Budget Committee and the selectmen to work together on that. But, you know, I'm here 25 minutes of eight on a Thursday night, putting this out for discussion. It hasn't been written down anywhere up until now.
No, I like it. And to be clear, the school budget hasn't been, you know, formalized either. It hasn't been agreed. But I think it might be a great idea for the CIP Commission then to meet before the presentation. Is that Adams, Adam Ricker's Committee generally?
Janet, you're on the Planning Board, so...
It would be, Paul Gorman is the chairman of the...
That's right, that's right. Yeah, just because we did go into some detail, a lot of these projects, so we might be able to help the process. I'm not at all opposed to the dialogue whatsoever. I just want to see if we can't be efficient in it before we bring it back up again.
Yeah, and for the audience, and you know this, the CIP plan goes out for several years. I'm laser-focused on FY '24 budget right now. Mark, your turn.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of the folks that are watching this recording, could you define what capital reserves is?
I think I'll let Kim do that.
The capital reserves are sort of like this town savings account. They are funds that are appropriated by town meeting, and they go into a specific account for that purpose only. They're held by the trustee of trust funds. So when the town meeting either votes to spend some of the money, or if the selectmen's are agents to expend, they may expend the monies only for the purpose of the capital reserve fund.
So actually, I guess I should go back to capital improvement program just for a minute, Lindsay, because my understanding is, at least in past years, that the capital improvement program committee is making no recommendation as to how the money should be raised that's listed for the various projects, only listing what should be raised, what should be spent.
Right.
So, for example, the first item of $85,000 for interior renovations of buildings, for example, that wouldn't necessarily come out of a capital reserve. It could come out of the operating budget. It could be bonded.
Right.
So the CIP numbers are spending numbers, they're not how the money is raised.
I think it's very fluid.
Yeah. But I'm saying that also for the purpose of the recording here.
Right. And the capital improvement program is different from capital reserve funds.
Right.
The capital improvement program is an advisory document that's supposed to aid the selectmen and Budget Committee in doing their work. It doesn't have money in it. It lists funds, but it's not a funding source.
Correct, thank you. That said it much more clearly. Other members, Chris?
Chris Lurio, Budget Committee. So to clarify, Bill, are you saying that it's, are you just looking for 2024 to reduce the capital reserves and then as a selectman group to talk about what the future would hold, 2025 and onward? Or are you looking to say, we need to rethink how we do capital reserves overall?
I'm saying principally the first. We're dealing with a fiscal year '24 budget. We have a significant, I think, issue in terms of the number of requests that we have when we add the, we're not shown in any of these documents yet what the wage increases might look like. But we've always made that caveat, that all of these numbers do not include wage increases other than perhaps in the library. And so when I look at all those numbers as what I think they're going to look like, I'm saying, and I think of Colin's opening question is, when are we going to get to the point where you're going to make some decisions? And I'm laying out here, because it's a new idea, that instead of chopping, chopping, chopping on every operating budget, that we do what many households do when you get into a short-term period when you can't put money in the savings bank and pay the bills. And so I'm suggesting that for fiscal '24 only, that we make this rather drastic change. I'm also suggesting that we take advantage of doing that and sit down when we're not targeting ourselves through just one year's budget and the nine of you and the three of us say, you know, are we doing this correctly? Would be a better way to do it? Are the numbers right? Are we calculating the numbers right? Are we putting too much in capital reserves and not doing enough in the operating budget? Should we be doing more borrowing? Or, God forbid, should we be putting more in?
No, so that, I just wanted to clarify that you were focusing on '24 and not as a general.
Absolutely.
And then, so the second point would be timing. So I think it's important, as we go into budget season and talk through this, having sort of the recommendations with the selectmen, so that we're aligned on what those recommendations are. Because as we start to go through departments and determine budgets as a Budget Committee, that we try and, we've always tried to reconcile along the way versus waiting to the last minute or the last meeting to do that. I think it would be beneficial to have some of those decisions sooner than later, so we're not doing it at the end.
As I think I answered Colin earlier in the evening, oh, you weren't here yet. It's our intent to, we're through with the departments now, we've plowed through all of that. Hopefully Nancy will be back with us next week, and the three of us will go to work on making our decisions about what we're going to include in the budget, in the budget that we give to the Budget Committee and what we're not, so that by the middle of November, you will have the selectmen's proposed budget for '24.
Great, okay, thank you.
John?
So my comment is that I really appreciate you bringing this up, Bill, and you're talking about 500,000. I think we have about a million that's going to be potentially transferred this year, which is about 10.77% of the operating budget. So I would like to get a little bolder and recognize your 500,000 and up it to the full million.
That'll make for some interesting discussion, won't it?
Yes, but I think it gives you a little more leeway in handling particularly the pay and benefits aspect of things. Sounds like the health is really hitting us hard this year. With regard to looking over the, well, I was going to also add to that, back in 2008, when the bottom fell out of the economy, we did just that. And I do not recall that we had, by holding off one year and trying to figure out what was going on, I do not believe that it caused any major upset with the town. A year on time and in general, with the capital reserves, isn't a big deal. But to address Chris's concern here, I see it as only a one-year thing while we figure things out. The other thing I was going to say with regard to the school board is that back in my previous stint on this committee, we had a time when the school board was running wild, and a number of the Budget Committee many members, and I believe one selectman, made it sort of our chore to attend some of the municipal budget and school board meetings, and we had some sway on them. And so I'm sort of putting forth the idea that we try and lean on them a bit. This 8% to 9% increase, I think, is inappropriate in the period of time that we're going through right now. And my last comment is, I've had a few conversations with Kim and I, with regard to the capital reserves, and I agree with Bill completely, that I think we need a better system of figuring out and following these things. Sometimes, an example would be, sometimes we buy a dump truck, and we, when I can seem to recall, was we had been scheduling, there was going to be $285,000 to do that. And when we got it, we got it for like $228,000. But we didn't, it didn't affect how much money we had in the capital reserves or was putting into the capital reserve account. So there is, there are softwares out there, apparently, where we can start tracking this stuff. And so I'd like to just say, I'm fully on board with Bill and trying to pursue this and so that we can stay on top of it more closely.
Thank you, John. Again, I want to make it clear, that's my proposal that I'm airing tonight, so that's on the table. Janet's had a very short period of time here to think about it. Nancy's obviously not here, so stay tuned. Maybe by the time next week rolls around, we'll be a little clearer on it. But I'm trying to deal with what I think Colin's getting at, which is, when are you going to tell us what you're really going to do? Any rest of you? Yeah, Colin.
Colin Beasley, Budget Committee. Kim, where in the paperwork, and maybe it needs to be provided, in order to do your exercises, I think we should have as context, the current value of all those reserve funds. So can you, can you get that to us in advance so we can analyze that? Because I think that'd be important data.
Yep.
Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, so that's, having set that down, we'll move on to the rest of the business of the evening, and we're complete with the budget aspect for tonight.
Bill, were you going to go through the capital outlays?
I thought I'd just leave that alone. Let's get the sheet that Colin just asked for and so on. I think, you know, that's, and we also need to look at the CIP requests and so on, so I did skip over that on purpose. Okay, moving right along, your report, Kim? Town administrators' report?
Administrators' report. The big event coming up, as everyone knows, hopefully, is Halloween. A portion of Main Street will be shut down from Williams Street, which is the Barn Playhouse, to Tracy Library, which is Pleasant Street. So that will be between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. Putnam and the Rec Commission's doing a great job of getting help. We have firefighters and police officers and various volunteers, so hopefully it's a fun and safe event. There's a huge candy drive, so hopefully the people who are in that area of Main Street and Presse Court, where the bulk of the trick-or-treaters will be, will have help with candy. Of course, people can trick-or-treat wherever they like in town, but I think a bulk of them will be there, so we're looking forward to that Sunday. Don't forget, if you want to volunteer, anybody out there who doesn't have kids to bring trick-or-treating, feel free to contact me or Putnam. That's all I have.
Do you have any committee report, Janet?
The Planning Board met on October 25th last Tuesday, and we heard the preliminary site plan for Twin Pines Housing with regard to the Chrysene property behind the shopping center. It was very detailed, it was well-attended meeting, and they explained what they were trying to do, and there were a number of questions which they were able to answer that night, but not all of the suggestions that they were given are incorporated yet into their proposal, but they will be back to the Planning Board. We also heard from Proudstone Corporation, which you all know as Peter Christians. They wanted a permit for a generator, and also they're converting the gift shop into a small bar. So, anyway, those were the two things that we had that night.
Okay, and Maureen Pearl nicely covered the Waste Committee earlier, so I won't repeat what she had to say. Janet, between now and the time we meet again, is it okay if Kim and the Police Chief and the Planning Director continue to work with Jones and Beach?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Minutes, we've got minutes, not only what's on the agenda here, but we also have the, I went back through the minutes of September 8th. Have you had a chance to read all these minutes now?
I have.
So we've got September 8th, 22nd, 29th, and October 21st.
I don't have any changes.
No changes?
We accept all of those minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Upcoming minutes, meetings, while the agenda says that the next regular selectmen's meeting is the 10th, it's actually next Thursday, the 3rd, when we will continue our budget discussions on our own. The Budget Committee obviously is welcome to come and listen to us, but it will not be a meeting that's, that you need to be at, because we completed our budget review with you, with the department heads. And then the other meetings of the various committees are listed on the agenda and are published online. So if there's no other business, Janet, we'll just sign our documents and say goodnight to everybody. You want to start? I'm trying to clean up my mess.